Call the meeting to order, please.
Evan, Caledonia.
Here.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester, Lima.
Here.
Livonia, Morris. Northansville, Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta, Springwater.
Here.
Westfarta.
Here.
I'd like to ask Board of Supervisors, Ivan Davis, that we descend to question reasons?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Here, with minutes from our last regular meeting, the 27th of August, your consideration. Is there any changes or care to move forward? During that, I look for some motion in a second.
Motion for.
Second, Walker.
Well, thank you. We do have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie? We have a public hearing this afternoon. Shannon, please, if you will.
Thank you, Chairman. This particular local law involves mortgage tax. When a mortgage is filed with the county clerk, a one and quarter percent mortgage tax is collected. The additional quarter percent in tax is revenue that remains local here with the county and is something authorized under existing local law, which that law is set to expire December 1st.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask if there's any members of the public person to speak on the hearing that we have open now at this time. If there's anyone, please come forward to the podium, sign in, and who have the opportunity to speak. Is there any supervisor at this time wishing to speak? We'll keep the hearing open and ask those questions near the conclusion of the meeting. Michelle, we do have two communications.
Proceed of acknowledgement letter from the New York State Department of Taxation and Finance with the enactment extending the county's additional 1% rate of sales and compensating use taxes for the period of December 1st, 2025, to November 30th, 2027. Due to the cancellation of the AI presentation last month, there is a survey on your desk to be completed. Please give your completed form to Megan Soffler.
Thank you, Michelle. Again, I'll call on Shannon to introduce the local law.
Local law number E 2026 allows the county to override the limit on the amount of real property taxes that may be levied by the county for 2026. The law simply provides the flexibility that may be needed as part of creating and adopting the 2026 budget.
Thank you, Shannon. We do have abstracted claims.
Mr. Chairman, move this abstracted claim and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Happ. Are there any questions or concerns on this abstracted claims this time? During that, I would like, please, Michelle, I'll support it.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris, Northansville, Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta, Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta, York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted.
We do have a verbal chief of.
Mr. Chairman, I request privileges of the floor for Anna Kolchak, Director of Livingston County Historical Society and Museum.
Thank you, Mr. Demme.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Anna Kolchak. I'm with the Livingston County Museum. Let's see if I can make this work. Located at 30 Center Street in Geneseo, New York. We represent all 17 towns of Livingston County, and it used to be District Number Five Schoolhouse in the Village. I thank you for the privilege of the floor today to give you some updates and what's been happening in this transformative year and time. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors that supports our institution yearly. Our Historical Society Board is working tirelessly to improve the institution moving forward. We have many, many community supporters, members, donors. We have new staff this year. Marlene Hammond Whitmore serves as a part-time employee, and numerous volunteers and interns. A few years ago was somebody still wearing a mask there, so it was 2019, 2020. We finished Phase One of the building project that allowed accessibility into the building and new upgraded restrooms, HVAC in parts of the building, and upgraded electric and all sorts of things within the existing footprint. Now we're moving on to Phase Two of the building project, and this is huge. I started in 2008, and it's really part of a process that started that many years ago. On the left, you can see the footprint of our existing building. It was originally 1838, and then pieces were put on in 1871, 1917, and then the 1970s. We don't mess with anything that's part of the historic significance of the building, but the 1968, 1970s parts are the pieces of the building that we are looking to with new construction. So you can see the footprint increases, and mostly, if you look to the second image, kind of the top-left portion of that, you can see there's a footprint that stays and then some additions to that. Why are we doing this? We have no storage whatsoever that's proper with HVAC considerations. I love that we're going to have this number because I can remember it. 1,111 square feet for storage. We'll have a new management space for our collections. Currently, we use our office for lunch and for collections and for board meetings and for a variety of things that collections don't want us to be doing side by side. We want to improve the exhibit flow. Anybody who's been to a museum know you have a start and an ending point, usually in the gift shop, right? So you know when you've sort of finished your experience. We lack that exhibit flow, and it really impacts the visitor experience. We did improve HVAC in parts of the building, but there are parts that were not affected by Phase One, and we'll increase gallery space by 667 square feet. So the storage room, if you remember that image on the top-right, it was the very, very left part, so it actually goes into the current public space, green space. It's very important for us to keep that green space. A lot of people use it. The library uses it. School groups use it. It's part of the community. So we really wanted to make sure we didn't really impact that and/or impact our neighbors in any significant way. You can see on the bottom, there's some projected growth room as well for any new collections that might come in. This collection management space will be off of the office, and it'll allow us to keep collections care safe and tucked away, even in isolation space. If you have something that comes in and it's got bugs in it, you really don't want to have that or in your house, you know, spread. So it's using best museum practices. So the flow would allow us to come in through one space, flow through the exhibitions, and come out at the end back where you started. And that's really significant for the experience. HVAC, we all know when we need heat or we need air conditioning, but your collections need to be managed as well. So we have a separate environmental control for our collection space and then also controls for the more public spaces. And then in that process, you all have that flag on your desk, the Livingston County flag, is how we're going to reorient, kind of if you close your eyes and you envision a museum from a blank slate, how would you put all of the exhibits and new exhibits kind of back together in a cohesive way? So it will be using the flag. The yellow is for agriculture. Blue is for waterways. Green is for nurseries and forests. White is for snow, no, limestone, and salt. And you can't read them here, but it will also be organized in addition to that thematic approach, kind of land of the big tree, and move through the salt mine, carriage house, into village life, domestic life, and then have a gallery that has all of the community stories that can change on a more regular basis. This is kind of a fun day when you get to make a big hole in the wall. As part of that process, we'll uncover, like we did in the first phase, some cobblestone that has been hidden for, you know, 60 years almost, and those are some windows that will also become part of the story of the building. And within that, as you go down a ramp for accessibility in a kind of controlled but feeling kind of a little bit tight space, you'll find your way down into an experience of the salt mine. We're working with a professional, several professional designers, and we've had lots of great meetings with stakeholders involved with salt mining. And as you go down the ramp, you'll have a space above ground, and then ride a simulated elevator into a space below ground. And where it's more shaded is sort of where we are going to get by having the fewest amount of light as we can but be, you know, compliant and really kind of have an immersive experience. There'll be a large salt mining front loader. I'm in there. That was really fun, juxtaposed with the only known existing salt mine cart that we're aware of, which is currently at the studio of B.R. Howard Incorporated in Carlisle, being conserved. It's a very expensive process, but it's neat work. We've had one fundraiser where we've had people pay to go underground. A few people paid to support the fundraiser if they didn't have to go underground. So we'll hopefully be doing that again, and we're really grateful for the support that we've gotten in that community. We'll also be featuring the Wadsworth coach. If you recollect to that space, in that existing, the new construction, there's something we call a little hyphen, and it separates the old building from new construction. And that meets State Historic Preservation Office requirements, too. But this will have a glass wall, basically visible from the green space, so people can see it when the museum's closed. It'll be illuminated, and that'll be something, as you pop out of the salt mine, you pop into sort of more daylight. And there'll also be, from the Center Street side, facing an exterior movie screen that will have sort of faux carriage doors, so that we just have to pull open the doors. And we've really enjoyed using that green space for the community. That started during COVID, and it's really something that's been enjoyed. How much does it cost? About this amount. It depends if we encounter any alternates that we might need to do, but we have a huge chunk of change that we're grateful for, the New York State Council on the Arts, which is a $445,000 grant. That's crucial to this project. And we recently received $72,000 from the New York Small Project Fund. We also have $200,000 in funding from the Institute from the Museum and Library Services, but that's really earmarked for storage. That grant was rescinded, and then it was reinstated. And so we're on a, we've got our bids out there because we really want to use that money to make sure that it gets reimbursed. We've also started a capital campaign. As of July 10th, we launched it, and we're moving forward already with about $100,000 since that time. And we've been sort of squirreling away our savings because we knew this project was going to be huge. So we're in our capital campaign right now. We actually are soliciting bids starting next week with, I think it's seven contractors, and then our storage equipment is also being put out for bid through kind of museum space saver companies. We've been saying all along, we're going to break ground in the fall, but it could be the spring as these things work, I think, either contractor schedules, or if we feel like we need that extra season for fundraising. We want to make sure it's a project that can be completed. So we're moving artifacts off-site. There's that stagecoach that took a ride on a flatbed truck to a warehouse. If anybody remembers this space in the museum, you could barely walk through. There was stuff everywhere, but this is the part that's going to be taken off, the part that has no HVAC, no heat, no good ventilation, and it's really not quality museum space. All along, we're still keeping our exhibits open where we can, like the Big Tree, the Genesee. This is a new exhibit. We've put, I had a nice time at Grizzly's finding some artifacts for the town of Portage, and we've represented each town in Livingston County with this farm-to-table exhibit. A new one that was done recently was about the Hemlock story, which is now the reservoir for Rochester, and there was a community that lived there before it became that water source. We've continued programming, and they've been well-attended. This, I love to the right, this is my new favorite image. If you read it, it says, "I heart the big tree." So we've, when we have school groups, we have to use outdoor space and rotate activities through. We're still always doing collections. This is something from Long Point Park that is just new to become part of our collection. So we don't stop collecting, and we continue with conservation. Here's a wonderful photograph of the Avon Fire Department annual inspection, and we're going to get that conserved and then blown up so you can really see the details. It's fabulous. And the Genesee Valley Canal, which is part of the waterways, right? And we put out a publication once a year, so that's new stories that relate to Livingston County, and that goes to all of our members. We market, but when we finish this project, we're really going to market. Right now, we do our normal avenues of marketing promotion, but we know once this project is complete, it really needs to be really attended largely to the community or promoted. So we really are here part of tourism in this region, part of economic tourism. We keep the history alive for our community. We are collaborating with other institutions like your historical societies and serve to educate. And I left a brochure in an envelope. This is just our capital campaign brochure, kind of is a synopsis of the project if anybody asks you, and we encourage any support financially from the communities, towns, villages, county, as we embark on this really transformational time. I'd be happy to entertain any questions, or you can reach out to me at any time if you would like to know more. And we invite you, September 25th, I think that's in the letter, we're having sort of a, you already know the project, but we'll have a little presentation, some sips and nibbles to tell the community about the project. So, thank you.
We do have several resolutions on this.
Proclaiming the month of October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Livingston County. Proclaiming October 19th to the 25th, 2025, as National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week in Livingston County. Providing for a public hearing on the county's proposal to submit a Community Development Block Grant application to the New York State Office of Community Renewal, Town of Mount Morris. Appointing members to the Livingston County Environmental Management Council, Caitlin Carbone and John Keel. Appointing member to the Western Regional Off-Track Betting Corporation's Board of Directors, Thomas Pushing. Designating Livingston County Tourism, Inc. as the 2026 Official Tourism Promotion Agency. Providing for public hearing on proposed local law E 2026 overriding the tax levy limit for Livingston County for the 2026 fiscal year.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there any discussion on any of these resolutions? During that, I look for a motion in a second to bring up a roll call.
Move for.
Thank you. We do have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I miss Carrie. The roll, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris, Northansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta, Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta, York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted.
Next, we have some resolutions. We're going to require a separate call.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation: Umana Health Company of New York, Inc., Umana Insurance Company of New York, and MedCor Staffing, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any concerns or questions on this resolution?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris, Northansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta, Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta, York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted.
Resolution increasing the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, private pay daily room and board rate, excluding the New York State Cash Receipts Assessment, effective November 1st, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion on this resolution? During that, roll, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris, Northansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta, Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta, York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation: New York's E-Health Collaborative, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or concerns on this contract?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris, Northansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta, Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta, York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted.
Amending Resolution Number 2023-180, New York State A R C, Inc., Genesee Livingston, Orleans, Wyoming Counties, Chapter Doing Businesses, Arc Glow.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions on this amendment? During that, roll, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris, Northansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta, Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta, York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health: Susan Cochran and United Healthcare Insurance Company.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion on any of these contracts? During that, roll, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris, Northansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta, Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta, York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Social Services: Catholic Charities, St. Ben Livingston, Chances and Changes, Inc., and Worldwide Travel Staffing.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions on any of these contracts?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris, Northansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta, Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta, York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Veteran Services Agency: Tyler Technology.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any concerns or questions on this contract?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris, Northansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta, Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta, York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted.
Mr. Demme, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following intermunicipal agreement for the Livingston County Central Services Department, Town of Geneseo.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris, Northansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta, Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta, York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County District Attorney's Office: New York State Office of Victim Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any concerns on this resolution?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris, Northansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta, Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta, York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for Livingston County: Livingston County Tourism, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions on this contract?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris, Northansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta, Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta, York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for Livingston County: Owl Library System.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius, Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris, Northansville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta, Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta, York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Planning Department: Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation, Doing Business National Grid, and Rochester Gas and Electric Corporation.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? During that, roll, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Aye.
Canisius. Geneseo. Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dantville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following memorandum of understanding for the Livingston County Planning Department, Town of Canisius.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this amendment? Here in the honorable, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kelladonia.
Aye.
Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following memorandum of understanding for the Livingston County Planning Department, Livingston County Highway Department.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Here in the honorable, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kelladonia.
Aye.
Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dantville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for mobility management, Medical Motor Service of Rochester and Monroe County, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions on this resolution? Here in the honorable, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kelladonia.
Aye.
Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Frontier Communications, and PMC Associates Wireless Communication.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on either of these contracts? Here in the honorable, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kelladonia.
Aye.
Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dantville. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
York.
Eyes 4440, absent 614, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contracts for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, New York State Governors' Traffic Safety Committee, there are two.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions on either of these grant awards contracts? Here in the honorable, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kelladonia.
Aye.
Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Dantville. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta. Springwater.
Aye.